We're we're good on this side, Paul.
Okay, thank you. All right, welcome everyone. I'm gonna call the Cumberland School Committee meeting on Thursday, April 23rd at 7:06 PM in accordance with Governor Armando's Executive Order Number 20-25 dated April 15, 2020. The school committee intends to conduct this meeting remotely. The public can participate in this meeting remotely but not in person by calling area code 646-558-8656. The webinar ID is 990-991-95293, or you can join us on Zoom. And the details to get in via Zoom is on the Cumberland School Committee Events Calendar, and the password ID number is 415089. So the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we all could rise, Pledge of Allegiance. I apologize if everyone's just looking at bodies here, but I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Item number three is compliance with Governor's Executive Order 20-25 dated April 15, 2020. Discussion, item number one is discussion/vote and whether there's public access to the meeting through adequate alternate means. We have seen, we have many people online here, and we have someone on the phone as well. So I need a motion to approve that discussion and/or vote is adequate for this meeting. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Collins.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters. I'm gonna go with a roll call vote. Mr. Collins? Yes.
I approve.
Mr. Fiorello?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Waters?
Yes.
Mrs. Friedman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bernado?
Yes.
Mr. Salvatore?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. For the record, all seven members of the Cumberland School Committee are present for this meeting. Thank you. All right, we have a consent agenda. Approval approval of minutes from the regular meeting on April 9, 2020, the special meeting of 4/16/2020, and approval of minutes from the executive session from 4/9/2020. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. We'll pull out items for discussion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve to get approve the agenda?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters and Mr. Fiorello. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it seven to zero. Thank you. Next is report out of executive session meeting. Report out of executive session meeting on April 23rd, 2020. There were no votes taken taken during the executive session tonight, and I need a motion to seal the minutes.
Motion to seal the minutes.
Motion by Mr. Collins.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven to zero. Next is the superintendent's report. Item number A is district distance learning plan update. Mr. Mitchell?
Okay, before I get started, Mr. Chairman, let me apologize. I'm using my phone to to do this, so having a problem with my computer, so I apologize. So there were two things I'd like to talk about. First is distance learning. I want to give you all an update on that. And as you heard today, we will be continuing with distance learning for the remainder of the school year. Governor made it official today. So we are planning accordingly. And just one of the things I wanted to do was talk a little bit about the survey results. I think you all have received a video, actually a slide presentation with my comments summarizing the results. Really pleased that close to 1,200 people responded to the survey. That information provided really helps us to improve the process. So I think the thing that I'm most pleased with is the feedback that families are getting, the questions related to communication from from school to home and from teacher to home. Both of those questions got very high marks. So the percentages were 90 plus for both of those. So I think that is a testament to the effort that our teachers and and support staff and all of our specialists are putting forth to meet the needs of our students. This is hard work, and we are we're we're learning, we're learning together. And I would be remiss if I just didn't acknowledge how pleased we are with the effort that everyone is is putting forth. The other thing that I wanted to mention is this. We've all heard that there are individuals struggling with mental health issues. And one of the things that I have been doing, because I have been getting lots of emails from mental health organizations offering free services to students and and adults, and I have been sharing them with staff. I'm hoping that individuals who may be having difficulty will take advantage of this opportunity because we know that people are having a difficult time. So we meet every day to talk about how things are going with distance learning. And I think so far, so good. I have connections in both Massachusetts and Connecticut. And by all accounts, people are pretty impressed with the work that is happening in Rhode Island and in particular in Cumberland. So we're really, we're really pleased with the effort of everyone involved in Cumberland's distance learning plan. So that is the first thing that I wanted to discuss with you, Mr. Chairman and school committee. And the other thing that I wanted to mention was, it's my pleasure to say a few words about the valedictorian and the salutatorian of the 2020 graduating class of Cumberland High School. I'm sure that some of you saw the article in the Valley Breeze today. Mr. Costa organized a surprise meeting on Google Meet last Friday, and there were several people in that in that meeting, all of his administrative team, all of the school counselors, and the two class advisors were also on the call. And we had an opportunity to acknowledge the outstanding work by both the valedictorian and the salutatorian. As you learned in the article today, the salutatorian is Cassidy Cooper. She, there's a lot of things to say about both of these individuals. Cassidy is a member of the National Honor Society, the World Language Honor Society. She received the Yale Book Award and the Society of Women Engineers Award. Cassidy has been a member of the Spanish Club, FBLA, a freshman mentor, and she was involved with the Writing Center. This is center helps those students who may be struggling with their writing. She was also a member of the Cumberland Dance Company team and taught for the Cumberland Recreation Department's dance program. Cassidy is planning on going to the University of Rhode Island, where she hopes to get into the nursing program there. So congratulations to you, Cassidy. And the valedictorian, everyone, is Jack Murphy. Jack is, as you can imagine, a pretty impressive young man. Jack, in addition to being a member of the National Honor Society, Jack has received the Harvard Book Award, the Brown University Book Award, CHS's Clipper Award, and the Clarkson Leadership Award. Jack will attend Georgetown University and major in political science in the fall, and his goal is to go on to law school, hopefully Georgetown University Law School, and eventually become an attorney because his goal is to help people. You know, one of the things that we talked about when we met last Friday, you know, I did a little research. I was curious as to when Cumberland High School was founded. And I believe, I believe according, and of course, I Googled it, and it, I learned that Cumberland High School was founded in 1895. And one of the things that we talked about in that 100, if you think about it, assuming there were 125 graduating classes, including the class of 2020, there is usually only one valedictorian and one salutatorian. So there's only been, assuming that there's one of each, there's only been 125 valedictorians, only 125 salutatorians. But if you do the math, if there's an average of 300-plus graduates of Cumberland High School every year, it's like over 40,000 graduates, but there's only been 125 valedictorians and 125 salutatorians. In 10 years from now, people are still going to remember them both as being one and two. 20 years from now, people are going to remember them as being first and second in the class. And in 100 years from now, there's only going to be 225 valedictorians and 225 salutatorians. So you don't do this well without working really hard. And I believe, as I've said many times before, I think you have to make some sacrifices that most people aren't willing to to make. And clearly, they're bright young people and outstanding representatives of the Cumberland School Department. So we wish them well. Jack and Cassidy, congratulations to your both, you both for being number one and two in the class of 2020. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mrs. Friedman? Congratulations on everything, Bob, for our, especially for the success we've had with the distance learning plan. And I have a question related to the governor's announcement today. How will that impact our last day of school? Do we know that yet? Last day of school for general students and the last day of school for the high school seniors?
Good question. The, I believe that the intent is for the, every school department to continue with their targeted date, last day of school for students. So I think it, I think for us, I don't remember specifically what it is, but like the last, it's my understanding that the last day of school for all Rhode Islanders is June 18th. Like, so there will be no students attending high school beyond June 18th. That's my interpretation of the information that was shared today. Our last day of school is earlier than that. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but I think it might be like the 12th or something. So all students would be the 12th. And I believe the intention is to, for classes to continue up until, you know, the last full day of school that was targeted for seniors. But I'll have to get back to you on that, you know, to provide you with that specific information.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a similar question to Karen. So the the governor had said that she would be giving a state calendar to the superintendent. So have you seen that already?
We, yes, we got those today. And if my computer was working, I would be able to share that with you. We'll, we'll get that out to you tomorrow. But yeah, we, they sent that out like within minutes after they made the announcement. It includes a couple of professional development days. There were two days, the 6th, and I think the 20th, they're Wednesdays in May. Those are professional development days. And then there was one professional development day in June. And that, and that calendar actually includes that they have the district's last day of school on that calendar. And I recall seeing Cumberland's on there. So it was before June 18th, which is when everybody is expected to be done.
All right. And one, one more question. Does Cumberland intend to continue with the Fridays as working days for the students?
Well, we, we have designated some working days, and by all accounts, that day has been extremely valuable to our staff so that they can prepare accordingly. Because, I mean, you know, even though we're teachers and we're, you know, we're accustomed to planning lessons and working with kids, this, you know, this whole virtual thing is something that's very new for everybody. So I've heard that, I know that there are teachers spending 12 and 14 hours, you know, a planning lesson. So I just gotta, I just gotta note that, that our last day of school is June 10th. So it's my understanding, unless I'm misinterpreting what was shared with us today, June 10th is our last day of school for everybody. And in fact, like I said, Cumberland's, Cumberland is on the calendar on that particular date as our last day of school. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a question, I mean, Mr. Superintendent, were you able to have that conference call with the commissioner today about the summer school programs that we normally run?
The, the summer school program conversation took place with the special ed directors. So, you know, we, I have not had a chance to discuss that with Dr. Santa, nor have I had an opportunity to discuss that with Dr. Mitchell, who is also a special ed director. We've been, you know, I've been in meeting, nonstop meetings all day. It's just been one of those days. So I haven't had a chance to have a conversation yet as to what ESY is going to look like this summer, but it's going to be a virtual experience for those students.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the school committee have a question in regards to that? Okay, here and none. We have reports of standing committees. Item number A, payment of bills, Mr. Salvatore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was no payment of bill tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next is fiscal management subcommittee update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Fiscal did meet tonight, Thursday, April 23rd at 6:00 PM, online, per Governor Armando's Executive Order. There was discussion of, we did get a business office monthly report, which Mr. Prignano will talk about a little bit, as well as it pertains to the budget. Overall, apologize, just pulling it up. Sorry, give it, give me one second. I'm multitasking over here. No, it's not. Oh, here we go. Overall, with the business monthly report, in a nutshell, and again, like I said, Mr. Prignano will touch base on it. It seems that we have a possible proposed surplus that will be around $900,000. Just an overview, we're saving on the bus, we're saving on some, some other aspects, which Mr. Prignano will go over. But also, we do have some lost revenue, tuitions, rentals of around $100,000. But it's looking pretty positive that we will be in the surplus of 900,000.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Salvatore? Okay, here and none.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have policy and procedures subcommittee update, Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, Policy and Procedures has not met, and I don't expect we will meet anytime soon. There is some policy work being done, but I don't expect us to have a policy meeting.
Mr. Fiorello, I did see an email from Tim Duffy that came across that sits something about adopting a policy in regards to student discipline. I don't know if you had a chance to read, Mr. Duffy?
I have not. When did that come?
That came this afternoon.
Okay, I just haven't seen it yet. I will read it and get back to you.
All right, thank you. Next is achievement and communications subcommittee update, Mrs. Friedman?
The Achievement and Communication Subcommittee also has not met, and we do not have another meeting scheduled at this time.
Okay. And last, but District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update, Mrs. Bernado?
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I get this, Mrs. Freeman, would it be possible, I don't know, to convene a meeting just to discuss the distance learning plan and maybe what we're getting? I don't know. I don't know what your thoughts on it. This just crossed my mind.
No, you know, it's funny. I was just thinking the same thing. I mean, originally, when we, when we canceled our meetings, it was because the governor had said we, meetings shouldn't be held unless it's on essential topics. But that has since been lifted, I understand. That's right, Mr. Adams, right? Yeah. So that means, that means that we could in fact meet. So I'll talk to Mr. Demana about that and see if we could schedule a meeting, and we could get an update on the distance learning stuff.
Maybe some, maybe some of the the principles, just because this is the new normal. I hate to, it sounds so cliche now, but just so we can update us on how we're maximizing whatever goals we're, we have right now. So we have time. So.
Okay. Anyone else? Good, thank you. Next is District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update. Mrs. Bernado, go ahead.
Yeah, we have not met at this time. It is possible, we'll schedule a meeting in the, in the near future, but at the moment, we have not met.
All right, great. Thank you. So next is comments from the public. Before we move forward on that one, I just want to say at the, Mr. Kinch had asked that we have public comment before and after at the end of the agenda. And so for the next agendas going forward for the school committee, we will add the extra comments from the public so that if you miss it in the top half of the agenda, you'll be able to catch it at the end. So for Mr. Kinch and others that, you know, would like it, it'll be on our next agenda going forward to have that there. So next is public comment, comments from the public. I'm working with a couple of screens here, so I will switch back and forth to the screens to the public as well. So is anyone who wants to speak comments from the public? I'm gonna switch to the public side here.
Everyone is available, so.
Everyone is available, so you can unmute yourself, and you could get in on the comments if you decide to. I don't see anyone asking to be unmuted at this time. So we will continue unless there's anyone else. All right, here and none for comments from the public. We will move forward. Mr. Collins, you had indicated you wanted to speak, or no?
I did. I wasn't sure. I was just looking, making sure that you follow protocol. So I think procedurally, if we were in session, I would walk down to the podium right now. I was just hoping to, and I don't want to put the cart before the horse here, but Mr. Mitchell's going to be talking about the budget. And I'm just, you know, we're all kind of, a lot, there's a lot of moving parts, and there's a lot of uncertainties. And one of the big uncertainties has to do with town funding for the schools. So I just, as a, as a member of the public, it's my hope that the town council does what they can to provide us with appropriate funding so we can maintain the advancements in the achievements we've made in the last couple of years to keep the district moving forward and not, and not, you know, regressing. That obviously, there are so many other factors, especially given our current circumstance, that I hope that they do, they can do what they can to, to, to provide us with the funding that we're going to need.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Switch screens again. I don't hear anyone, see anyone, so we'll move off. Next is new business discussion, the indoor vote to approve the homeschool instruction request for the 2019-2020 school year. Mr. Superintendent or Mr. Demana?
I, I believe, Mr. Demonic, that that there may have been one, and I apologize. I don't recall specifically, but in order for us to even include this on the agenda, certain criteria has to be met. So the reason that this is on the agenda is because the criteria has been met. I would recommend approval.
I will make a motion to approve. Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters and Mrs. Friedman, waving her hand. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it seven to zero. Yes, Mr. Salvatore. Next is item number B, discussion of the fiscal year 2021 superintendent's proposed school budget. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Demonic. And again, just bear with me under the circumstances here.
Mr. Superintendent, just for one note, after your discussion, we will send it to fiscal and have Mr. Salvatore set up a couple of meetings for the public to chime in on this. And it's my expectation that we'll advertise it in the Valley Breeze so that the public will know to comment here, be able to go to that meeting. Okay?
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me, let me just very quickly, before I just do a quick review of the proposed cuts that we're going to be discussing to balance the budget. First of all, Mr. Prignano, are you on, on the call?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right. So let me just, let me just preface my comments by saying, you know, we have already made significant cuts to the budget up to this point. We have already cut more than $4.8 million from the budget. And it includes a number of positions that we feel are incredibly valuable. But unfortunately, when you have to make difficult decisions like this, you do the best that you can. So we have made $4.8 million in cuts. And that total included a 4% increase from the town, which equaled approximately $1.8 million. Not knowing how much money that we're going to be getting from the town, we have a responsibility to be prepared to make $1.8 million in cuts if we don't get any funding from the town. And we know that we are in really difficult financial times. So we have put together some additional cuts. The central office leadership team has met. And let me just say that, you know, it was painful. And you're going to understand why in just a second. That there is one advantage that we have, if you want to call it an advantage, I don't know how you can call COVID-19 savings an advantage. We know that there is some money to be saved there, and a great example of that is transportation. We know that we are saving a significant amount of money in transportation and in some other areas as well. And on the same token, we know that there were some revenue sources that we were counting on that will not be coming in. And we, we know that some of the COVID-19 savings that we are experiencing will have to be designated for other things. So let me just very quickly run through some of the cuts that we are recommending. And remember, we have already made significant cuts. And, and when you total all of the positions that we are going to be, that we need to make in order to balance the budget, we're looking at, this is certified, non-certified, full-time positions, part-time positions, certified, non-certified. We're looking at a total of 38.6 positions in total. That's a lot of positions. So to, and we, and we know that there were some additional costs that we have already discussed. For example, we cannot conduct our usual kindergarten registration. So we have had to add kindergarten registration to our, to Aspen, the school management software that we use. And that will cost us $12,000. But we have to get these kindergarten students registered. And I know parents are anxious to get that done. So it is our hope that we can start that process by the middle of May. Mr. Chandler has been working very closely. May. Mr. Chandler has been working very closely with Aspen to expedite this process. So the additional $12,000 there, we are anticipating with all of the layoffs, that the school department will have to pay a significant amount of money in unemployment. So we're anticipating that we could, it could cost us as much as $600,000. So we hope to use some of our COVID-19 savings to cover that cost. We are anticipating additional special education tuitions. As you know, we have some students with significant needs whose needs are met by highly specialized staff when they are here with us. We're anticipating that we may have to send more students out of the district to accommodate their specific needs. We also know that there is a significant impact on the district regarding technology. We have... We are struggling to keep them all in operation. We know that there are some that are at that point in time where they need to be replaced, so we are anticipating the need to use $300,000 in COVID-19 savings to cover the cost of what we anticipate will be the need for an additional 1,000 Chromebooks. So the COVID-19 savings will help cover that cost. Some of the additional cuts that we have planned, and again, these are... We don't want to do many of these things, but every year, it costs approximately $20,000 to rent P-PAC, the Providence Performing Arts Center, for graduation and transportation to get students there. So we are eliminating that cost, $20,000. We are also proposing cutting middle school sports. That will save us $60,000. We all, many of the administrators, in fact, all of the administrators belong to professional organizations. So for example, I belong to the Rhode Island Association of School Superintendents, and, you know, we have meetings every Tuesday and Thursday that I report out to you on a regular basis. There is also an organization for building administrators. We are recommending that we cut all of the dues for all of the professional organizations, which will save $25,000. Preschool transportation, we have a, we are obligated to provide transportation to special education, special needs students. That will continue. We have been providing transportation to students who do not have special needs, so we are proposing that we eliminate that cost. So we'll save $50,000 there. We are recommending, we don't want to do this, but we are recommending cutting music at the elementary schools, which will result in the loss of 3.6 music positions, and all of the pension connected to that will result in $300,000 in savings. We hope to meet with the mayor. We're hoping to do some things with healthcare, and we want to take a little bit of a gamble with healthcare budget for healthcare claims, and I don't want to get into that at this particular point in time, but we need to meet with the mayor on this particular issue, and if he supports the idea, and the town council supports the idea, that could potentially save us $400,000. Currently, we have a teacher assistant in 16 kindergarten classrooms in the district. We are recommending that we reduce that number from 16 to 6. That means we will eliminate 10 kindergarten TA positions, and our thinking is there would be one kindergarten TA per elementary school. There has to be two at community, given the size of that school. We are also recommending the elimination of a .4 school psychologist position, the elimination of a .4 special ed clerk position, and we are also recommending that we do not move forward with $25,000 in equipment needs for our career and tech ed pathway program. So just, you know, as you can imagine, this, and I'm not trying to be overly dramatic here, but when you consider that there are approximately, and I know Mrs. Dunkinson is on the call, I believe we have around, you know, 600 employees in the district, and we're talking about eliminating 38.6 positions. Everyone knows that Cumberland is as lean as lean can be. We spend less per pupil than any other district in the state, and the thought of losing all of these positions, which we have worked so hard to keep and add positions that we need to improve the quality of teaching and learning in the district, is... To suggest that it's discouraging would be an understatement. This is going to have an impact. There's no question about that. So... And with all of those cuts, Mr. Chairman, we are still looking at, we got to find another $600,000, $667,000 in cuts, and we're already using, by the way, a significant amount of fund balance to balance this budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if there are any questions, and Mr. Pignano is, you know, can jump in here, and I don't know if, Alex, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Well, maybe I could just, while we have two council people in the audience, explain a little bit on the healthcare, since it affects the town. What the... What we would hope to do is, we have $7.4 million budget in next year in healthcare. We would reduce the budget to $7 million, and ask that the town, anything over $7 million to $7.4 million, they would absorb, and they could do it in their levy that they adjust, that they adopt a year from now. So if they don't feel they have, with COVID-19 going on or whatever, and they don't feel they can do, you know, that people out of work, and right now, and that type of stuff is going to affect what their thought process is in passing the levy that's coming up now, this could, this $400,000 could be generated a year from now if we need it. So it would give the town and school department some time to get out of the COVID-19 recession that, you know, that is hitting cities and towns. So that's how that would work.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pignano. Any members of the council, not town council, but the school committee, have any questions at the moment? We're going to refer this to the Fiscal Finance Subcommittee to have hearings for the public as well. And then it is my expectation that we will vote on May 14th for a budget that goes to the mayor's office. He's asked us when it will be available to get down to him, and then hopefully, we'll know before June 1st what the implications of the budget request will be, and then we'll have to deal with the layoffs, because all the layoffs going forward now will be based on the budget. So they have till June 1st. So bear with me, folks. I have nine people in front of me here on the screen, and I'm going to flip through the screens and see if anyone else wants to ask the superintendent the question. If you could just raise your hand if possible. So I see everyone else's screens are done, and their mics are muted, so I don't see anyone at this current time that wants to ask a question of the superintendent. So again, as my intention, Mr. Salvatore, this will come to you to schedule the meetings, and then we make sure we get it advertised in the Valley Breeze, so that we can let the public know of the hearing date, okay?
Give Mr. Chair.
Okay, yes.
I said, "Thank you," Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right, yeah, I lost you. All right, thank you. All right, so next is personal recommendations. Mrs. Dunkinson?
Yes, thank you. I have five items tonight for your approval. The first is a, is non-certified retirement. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the retirement of Kathleen Tracy, Building Secretary at Garvin Memorial School, with an effective date of August 23rd, 2020, after 21 years of service.
And you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mrs. Waters, second by Mr. Salvatore. It's hard to see someone go after 21 years. They're the, really, the ones that are in charge of the building, they know everybody and do everything, and 21 years, and we lost the woman who was at McCourt, you know, as well, and others, and we wish her well. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, and I thank you. I thank Ms. Tracy for her service. Then I have three resignations from certified staff. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the resignation of Kelly Cleary, grade-two teacher at Community School, effective June 30th, 2020.
Let's take all three together, please.
Sure. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the resignation of Keith Caldwell, business teacher at Cumberland High School, effective June 30, 2020, and I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the resignation of Janita Ducharme, music choral teacher at Cumberland High School, effective June 30, 2020.
And you have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Fiorello?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it seven to zero. Next one?
Finally, leave of absence. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the personal leave of absence for Erica Coletti, grade-one teacher at BF Norton Elementary School, for the 2021 school year.
Is there a motion to approve? Anyone?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bernardo. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it seven to zero. That's tough with all these screens. I'm going blind. Next is School Committee Comments, School Liaison Reports. I just got one item. I briefly talked with the superintendent today about graduation here in Cumberland, and I know the high school admin team is working very hard to put something together for the graduating seniors, and I hope that, you know, they can make it all work as well. I know, I reached out today to Gillette Stadium, because on their website, they actually have a graduation setup on the field, so I don't know if the Gillette will be feasible, but, you know, these kids, they've worked awful hard this year. We've got to make sure that we give them the proper recognition, you know, that the town should do for these children, and they've worked very hard, and, you know, I think we've given them a taste of online learning at college, and we certainly will wish them well in their endeavors. So, with that said, is there no one else? Mrs. Friedman, go ahead, and then Mr. Collins and Mrs. Waters.
Speaking of our high school seniors, and as the parent of a high school senior myself, I just want to acknowledge and thank the administration for the surprise signs that showed up in our yard Sunday morning, you know, a proud family of a CHS 2020 graduate, and I just cried when I saw it. So, thank you. It was, I know from everyone, it was really special, so thank you for doing that.
Right, and then Mr. Collins, then Mrs. Waters, and Mr. Fiorello.
I have a, I don't know if you can see this, I have an invitation for next Wednesday for the Cumberland School Volunteers Recognition Ceremony, which has obviously been canceled. So when I saw that in my folder, I just, you know, you consider with all the stuff going on, it'd also be before all this, remember, it's the volunteers, the PTOs, they're still producing yearbooks, spirit week, pep rallies, you know, bake sales, musicals, plays, you know, they make learning fun, and they raise a lot of money for the schools, too. So I hope at some point, we can recognize the school volunteers, which are remarkable in the town of Cumberland.
Right. Mrs. Waters, you're next.
Yep, I just wanted to echo some comments that Mr. Mitchell had made earlier about mental health, and if families are experiencing anything, if their kids are feeling really stressed out, that there's the Kids Link option, and the governor had mentioned the phone number on her press conference today, and I just wanted to give that number out again. It's 855-543-5465, and that's for anybody who's feeling any kind of stress over this kind of situation, and it's really important to keep your family healthy and not underestimate how important that is.
Correct. Mr. Fiorello, you were next. Did you raise your hand? You all set?
No, I don't know if anybody's ever been punched in the stomach before, but it feels just like having 4.8 million cut from your school budget.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Salvatore, unmute yourself, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Mr. Fiorello's signal broke up. I couldn't hear what he had said.
I said that...
Go ahead, Mr. Fiorello.
All I said was that if anybody's ever been punched in the stomach before, it feels just like having 4.8 million cut from the budget.
Right, thank you. Well, Mrs. Waters, I agree 100% about the mental health. You know, six weeks that I've been in this house with this knee issue, and physical therapy feels good right now, even though they put me in so much pain, but you're right. You know, everyone needs to, you know, the need to make that phone call, make the phone call for everyone, you know, for your family's sake as well. So, Mr. Superintendent, do we have executive session tonight? You said yes. We do not. Okay, thank you. We'll get a hang of this, I'm sure. Mr....
Motion to approve.
There you go. I was going to call you out on that. Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Waters gives a second, and Mrs. Friedman as well. Mr. Salvatore, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it seven to zero. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Salvatore, maybe we'll talk tomorrow about trying it with the superintendent, and try to figure out when you want to have the meetings for the budget.
Mr. Chairman, I think we... Sounds great. We'll talk in the morning. Thank you, Mr. Demanica. We potentially talked about May 7th, right, and 14th for the vote, so we can talk about that more tomorrow.
Right, we just want to make sure we get the advertisement in the papers correctly for the public. So that was key for the mayor, to make sure everyone had that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.